I'll call the meeting to order. If you all three of you'd like to start your meetings.
My allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, which is saying it's one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Congratulations to the candidates at Boobong in the election. And after commissioners, council, all the other. Good luck and energy for the fall. Okay. Judge.
That's her. You're up first.
Thank you. Good morning. We're here, I'm here to request a additional appropriation for corporate transfer fund. We are obligated to pay for transcripts of the hearings when indigent defendants and parents in Chin's cases or PPR case or criminal rights cases when they appeal. And we had a bottleneck of those earlier this spring, cases that generated from last year, they're finally getting around to appeal this year. And so our requested amount of appropriation in the budget last year was not enough. We estimate that we're going to need another $6,000 of the rest of this year, and that is my request.
Questions for the judge? Do you think then, as you work your budget up, you'll be maybe adjusting that figure a little bit as you review what your case will be?
We will certainly talk about it. I think, as I said, it's kind of a bottleneck. Cases that came together all at once, it's not the usual amount. It's the first time I've had to come to county council and request additional appropriation for this fund. So our budget request has been enough in most years, but most up nine of the eight last year. So we'll talk about it and see if we'll adjust the budget for next year.
So this isn't a trend?
I don't think so. I hope not.
Make a motion to approve the request for $6,000.
Got a motion by Thor, second by John, that we approve the additional $6,000. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed. Thank you.
Have a good rest of your day.
You too. Superior Court. I don't think Judge Paul is going to be here. His request is, yeah, they had a person leave and collected their remaining PTO hours, $4,700. He's requesting for that much to be put back into his budget. They replaced that position according to Tiffany. There was no gap in the employment. So this money looks like it'll be needed by the end of the year. So that person can be paid. Is that correct, Tiffany? There's no other funds for it to come out of besides County General?
No, it's their personal. It's where this, the criminal court reported us.
I have a general question on this. On the PTO hours, that's not budgeted into their yearly budget?
No, because you can't, no one's working or retiring. If they did, then they'd be able to transfer those funds to other.
I didn't know that cumulatively per pay period.
I'll make a motion to additional appropriation for $4,700. For $4,700, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Tom, a second by Joan, that we agree to $4,700 for the budget. Any further discussion? We do, I think, have a cap on PTO. It would be kind of nice to see how many people we have with that maximum or close to it. That becomes a liability that sometimes Nick knows that that can become a liability that is unnoticed. But you just don't look at it all the time until the person gets ready to do so. You know, you've got to make sure that you've got money subsided, or you know what that amount is accumulated with 200 and some employees. That could be a significant amount that we should recognize anyway that we have it out there. We owe it to the people, but it is a liability that we have. That's the only thing I have. Do you have a motion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed. One minute.
Good morning. So asking to transfer some funds from categories within the criminal detention alternatives initiative grant. We, our fiscal year for our grant ends on June 30th. And when we get to toward the end of the fiscal year, we just like to see if we're going to have any money left over in the given categories that we budget for. And in our ordination category, we have some travel for Indianapolis for events, things like that. Taking local folks to trainings and have the money left over from there. And then we have some money in the programming category that I want to move up to supplies. And then that top category, I want to move down to supplies. So naturally, this is here because the transfer cost is actually benefiting Troy's tools. That extra money that we have, I have to be, what, if anything, Troy might need. We've got some graduating kids, just make an extra question for them, getting to that year end. Supplies taking care of, some incentives, things like that. Just get them towards that graduation year. So that's what I'm asking for today.
So none of this money is being transferred into a category where it could add to or supplement anyone's yearly salary?
That is correct, just supplies.
I'll motion to approve the quest, request for a transfer of $2,000.
Motion by Nick.
Second.
Second by Kim. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed.
I believe we have some there.
Okay.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to approve both requests. First request for $2,000 and the second request. Well, then I'll motion to approve the second request for $515.
And I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for $515. And any other comments on that? Okay. Hearing none, I'll call for the motion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council, Dale Booth, Willy County Economic Development. Pleased to have a really unique company here today in front of you. We are asking with resolution 2024-09 for phase and tax on the investment they're going to make. Ultra Maritime is one of Indiana's largest defense contractors and a key player in the national security of the United States and other countries. Very, very unique company. They have been in Willy County for many decades, and they are the second largest. They have an opportunity to grow a lot more business, they can secure their future if they're increasing. And I would come back in a minute, but we have their vice president of operations here today. He's going to talk a little bit about what's going on at Ultra, the opportunity they have, and their plans to hire quite a few more people so far.
Morning. My name is Bala. Bala, I'm the vice president of operations for Ultra. Like I mentioned, we make a lot of the sauna movies that the Navy uses every single day. Today, as we speak, there are two companies that can do it. There is a company called Spartan and Flora, and there's Ultra. We are going towards sole source, the US Navy, where we'll be the only provider for the US Navy for all the programs. So the board is investing around $18 million this year and next year. On these days, I'd like to invite everybody to come visit us, show you all the good things, automation, new equipment, new workstations. They're also going to be hiring at least 200 more people, that they intend to get sole source of water from the US Navy. We are putting in position because Spartan and Flora is not qualified, luckily we are qualified. So we are 90% sure we can get the sole source of water. So that's like investing a lot of money, investing in training, investing in equipment. A pretty exciting time for us. The board is finally open to their checkbook, and we asked for $30 million, but I knew you won't get it. But we'll get $18 million if it's approved between this year and next year. So I want to come in, you know, present myself and what we're doing at Ultra. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I have a quick question. Of the jobs that you're anticipating and bringing to Willy, are any of those entry level or are they all skill based?
We have multiple levels to try and bring employees. One would be on the shop roles, I would say 75% of the shop role. But we're also bringing in engineers, we're working with some of the local universities like Purdue, bringing industrial engineers. We're also bringing in design engineers as we qualify more and more for it. So it's marketable level for, so that would be the shop role, when you go against some of the work and solving and things like that.
Do you anticipate those being, I guess, what would, what would the salary anticipation be of those 75%?
We have a salary tax that's around $19.20 an hour. We have actually one of the better paid employees in the area. We do a lot of salary analysis, and we try to make sure they both have good salary benefits. So starting with on, on 19.20.
Okay. The reason I ask is because with bringing jobs to Willy, which is desperately needed, the salary is important. That way they can afford to buy homes and we can obviously increase our tax base here.
Sure. So it's a very valid point. They're trying to make sure we attract and accommodate also the paid tab. So it's like a lot of training, and Bill had to be working on some other training program to enhance it. That they, we hire people, and we're also trying to do a peer structure, and plus have a career bank. They can grow into higher level jobs and stuff like that.
Great.
Thank you.
So you really don't have much room there for expansion? You don't plan on building to accommodate this new venture? Is all being handled as where it's at right now?
Yes, right now we are planning to just relay up the lines. Next week we have a free event where we move things around and make sure we have a squeeze up again. There's a lot of room to improve. At one point we talked about expanding, ask to grow into a second shift. At that point, we may start expanding the building, but right now the plan is to have the same footprint, but probably better you fly to that soon.
On your example here, as a five-year payment example, is it for five years or is it for 10 years?
I calculated it for five, but I ran it as if they would be in a location, sound like I do always, but we're going to make, the request is for a five-year tax.
Thank you.
And he had come in front of the redevelopment commission and redevelopment commission favor vote to pass it on. But I also think it's a good opportunity to show the counties around us that Willy County is trying to do their best to help protect us. United States wise, and to show that we're willing to go the effort to have Ultra take on more personnel to keep up and everything. So this time I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution number 2024-09.
I'd make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Kim.
I'll second.
Second by Joan. Any additional comments, questions? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of resolution number 2024-09, raise your right hand. That passes unanimously. I toured your facility years ago, and I'm sure it's changed. I'm sure that the products have changed. So I encourage council and so forth to make that visit.
Please do, please do. Let us know. We'd be happy to show you around. We'd be excited to show all the, all the new parts of the Navy. The Navy captain was here a few weeks ago, and he was very impressed with all the changes we're making. So I certainly want to invite the councils, like, come and look at all the things with them.
Dale, maybe you could coordinate.
Yeah, I can coordinate. The other thing too, we're really pleased with, I mean, they continue to increase the percentage of the workforce with the county presidents, but also they're just a phenomenal veteran, kind of hiring.
We have also a lot of veterans.
Yeah.
Will you share your name again?
Senthel Bala, S E N T H L, Senthel. B A L A Bala.
Thank you. Yes. Again, thanks very much.
Morning.
Good morning. Sorry. I'm Cindy Baker, and I am the executive director for Troy School. And we have been receiving funding through the county. And I just wanted to say thank you for starters. We're super grateful that you allow us to have funds through county in order for these kids to continue to have an education whenever the public school is not working out for them. I just wanted to give you an update of where we are right now. We have served 50 students this year. We currently have 45 students. We have, over the course of the school year, lost five students due to a variety of different things. But right now we have 45. We have actually hired our own mental health services provider who provides one-on-one, ongoing mental health support for a majority of our students. I think right now 90% of our kids are seeing a mental health counselor in our program once a week or once every other week, and most of them for the first time in their lives. This is not something that they have accessed before they came to Troy. But as part of their enrollment at Troy, that's just something that we offer to families, and they sign up at the time of enrollment for school. And so that just tells us that we are the school for the bad kids. That's what everyone calls us. And so we're sort of leaning into that. Yes, we do take lots of kids that are quote "bad," but their bad behaviors have an underlying reason for them. And so having access and giving them access to mental health care is truly what we think is going to help them as they grow into adulthood to be able to be self-sufficient and have economic freedom and those kinds of things that we all want our kids to be able to do whenever they graduate from high school. This year we have 12 students graduating, and we're very excited about that. This year, as a matter of fact, with the kids that are graduating, we've seen a lot of kids come through because of when the COVID shutdown happened, and lots of kids just didn't do any work. Like when school shut down in March that year, 2020, there's a lot of kids throughout Willy County who just didn't do anything. They didn't finish that semester. And then the following year, when many schools offered online as an option, lots of kids signed up for online and still didn't do anything for a whole year. And so what we're seeing this year is probably seven or eight kids who that was their story. When they came to us as sophomores, they were, had no credits. They didn't do anything when they were freshmen. Or if they came to us as a junior, they may have had five credits. And so we've been able to help them catch up on credits. And they will tell you that they didn't think they would ever graduate. And so just offering Troy as an option in our community is really, really important because it's, it's so important for a student to graduate from high school, right? I mean, that's better for them in the long run, for their economic freedom. And it's better for our community in the long run too, to make sure these kids are not falling through the cracks, dropping out of school, that they graduate and can contribute to our community. Last year we started a partnership with the Whitco Career Academy. And this year we have seven students attending the Career Academy for a variety of different vocations. I believe we have four students who are in welding and machining, and two students right now who are in culinary. And then next year we're sending three additional students, two more in the machining and welding, and one will be going through their criminal justice program. And so that partnership for us has been really exciting. Our students understand that they have to have good attendance, they have to have good behavior. They have to be where they are supposed to be for their credits in order to qualify to even attend the Career Academy. And so those kids that are making that happen, we're very excited to see what this will bring for their futures. This year we don't have any of our Career Academy kids graduating, but we do next year. We have five graduating next year. So I'm excited to see what the job opportunities are like for them with the skills that they have. And hopefully they'll be able to walk right into a job as soon as they graduate within our community. Things are going really well. I think our biggest concern right now is space. We're space challenged within our building. We need to be figuring out what our next plan is, whether we're going to stay on the spot that we're at or whether we're going to try to look for a different location. We really don't intend to grow to, to serve a lot more students. I think our middle school, we could use some growth in. Right now we only serve about 10 middle schoolers, and we've got a waiting list of about 15 kids on our middle school only list. We also have a waiting list for high school students as well. But I could see some growth happening in our middle school. But we don't want to grow too much because the appeal of what we have at Troy is the smallness of what we have, the family kind of feel that we have going on there, the one-on-one and the relationship building that we do with students there. That's what helps make them successful. It's been a great year. If you haven't been out to see Troy lately, we would love for you to come out and take a tour. It's kind of crazy sometimes, and some people think it's a little chaotic, but we get used to it. It's a, it's a really great option for kids in our community. And we're just grateful that you believe in the mission and that you're willing to support us through the county. A lot of the kids that are there, I don't think would make it in a regular high school setting because of the things that are going on in their own environment keep them from being successful in that, in that setting. Anybody have any question?
What other funding have their sources?
Oh, gosh, yeah. Sure, yeah. We have about 25% of our funding comes from the School Choice voucher, which is through the Department of Education. The rest of it comes from fundraising, grant writings, you know, solicitations of corporations and businesses and individuals. We do have a contract with two school corporations in the county that if they have a student that's struggling and they think that they would do well in our environment, they can send them our way. That's where our funding comes from.
I had a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So first one, do you guys do any kind of job placement services for these kids?
Well, I wouldn't call it job placement services, but we help them put a plan together for when they graduate. We will help them do an online application for any employer. We will take them to an interview if they don't have a driver's license. So some of these things are obstacles that they face. Like sometimes they just don't have a driver's license. And so we really impress upon them how important it is for them to have a driver's license if they want to ever be independent and have some freedom, right? And so that's really one of the first obstacles, is you've got to get a driver's license if you want to have a really good job. You could take public transportation, but it's going to cost you, you know, and can you afford to pay that instead of just getting a license and you taking care of your own transportation? So this is a huge obstacle that we see on a regular basis. And so we've really made a push to try to get as many kids as possible to get that driver's license. So we don't follow them after graduation. We try to help them put a plan together before they graduate and secure a position before they graduate. I think of the 12 kids that are graduating, I know four have already secured positions. I think we have three kids that are actually going to be going on to careers, to vocational training at IB Tech in Fort Wayne. And so that's kind of what we do to help them understand you're getting ready to be an adult. Let's put a plan together for you. We do a career assessment and things like that to try to help them nail down what they would be interested in. This is the first year since I've been there that I know that we've had kids who have said they're interested in going to college for additional career training or to become something. Like I have a girl that wants to be a social worker, and another person that wants to be a pharmacy tech. And so they're going to first start out at IB Tech. And I have another gentleman who wants to be in automotive, and so he is going to be an IB Tech guy. And what's so exciting for them about that is these careers are high demand careers, and I believe that IB Tech will waive your tuition if it's a high demand career as designated by the Department of Workforce Development. So their education won't really cost them nothing. They just have to get themselves there. So that's why we're on, like, getting a driver's license. So that's really what we do. We do a follow-up in the summertime or probably in August, just to see how things are going with those kids that have just graduated. Some of it's going great, some of them, you know, they've had some challenges. But we don't really do, I would say, career placement like you might be thinking.
I was thinking more like helping them secure internships while they're.
Oh, yeah. We've done that quite a bit. I'm sorry. We have done that. We've had childcare interns, we've had people interning with Giving Gardens. We had someone, I believe, who was at the, one of the libraries in the community. So if there's something like that and they have the time in their schedule to do that, we will help them do that because we know that that will just help them in the long run find a job because they have work, employability skills behind them. So, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Do you see more people going to the Whitco Career Academy, more students headed that way?
We would like to see that, yes. We take all of our freshmen on a tour, and our eighth graders as well, on a tour, the Career Academy, so that they see what the different career options are there. They do a career assessment, and if it lines up with something at the Career Academy, then we really try to get those students to go. I think it can be scary for some kids because it's a different environment than what they're used to at Troy. But yes, I mean, my goal is to have more kids go. This next year, we're only having three new students. I would really like to see five a year be added. This year we're just having three, but we're going to continue to push that.
Some of those job opportunities, aren't they certified? And maybe go get a job when they come out there so they don't have to
Yes.
go on to junior college, college.
Absolutely.
They're certified, trained, ready for job when they walk out that.
Yes, I don't know all the ins and outs, but I do know, like, welding, you get certified, CNAs become certified. So there are those kinds of positions. Childcare workers become certified so that if they want to move into that career, they've already got that certification, which is huge. So, yes, helps them in the job hunt whenever they're finished. So, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. Just wanted to let you know what was going on at Troy, and we really appreciate the support that you've been providing to us. It helps a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, personnel. Turn it over to Tom. Jen? Last, last month we tabled four items. You've got some paperwork in front of you to explain what the personnel committee decided on. So we'll just take them, we might as well just take them one at a time. And I'll have Tiffany and Jennifer, if you have any questions, you can direct it to them too. They'll probably, well, especially the honor can answer more on that and Jen too. So however you want to discuss it, start with the honor's office request for make payroll deputy to payroll deputy. So you can see our notes from our meetings there, what the honor wants to do. So I'll be quiet and let, take questions from her.
Okay, remember this last month, so if you have any questions left, Jen or I know.
Do you want to take, like I said, you want to do them one at a time? Does the council want to make a motion to accept the first one? Open for discussion.
Was that sent out, that position re-factored or factored?
We already have one in that position, so we didn't need to have it factored.
Say more.
So actually, is she going to drop the, the payroll deputy too, correct?
Yes.
File management and have two payroll deputies that way. One goes PTO time, and the other just carry on the, the time course. Questions? Jen, you have anything to add? I guess we need a motion to accept the first one on our paper or more discussion.
I'll make the motion to accept the, moving the personnel up to the same payroll, I guess, the role deputy.
We have a motion from Joan to basically make a second. Position one, right Tiffany?
Just bring them up to the same.
Just bring them up to the same, which is about, about $1,800 difference in pay, responsibilities more. But it does give two people that can do payroll.
Is this person already up there in your office? And then when she moved, you can replace that position?
Yes, if anybody in my office would leave, I would have to replace them.
Was your question more on the position she's leaving to go to?
Yeah.
Yeah, that position will go away.
Okay.
You're not going to fill that?
No, we're just bringing them up to be titled the same and have the same responsibilities. But no, I'm not adding.
No, no additional report.
Just more responsibility.
Second. Your second, okay, second by John. Further discussion? A call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion make two. Come, come, talk, whatever they pronounce that, one positions. Forty-six thousand eight forty-one. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say. The second request is still from the Auditor's Office, reclassification of deputy. You can read our notes from our Personnel Committee and then Jennifer, Tiffany can explain it more. If there's questions on it. Is this, we did do this when Personnel Committee tried to re-factor it. We were higher than what WIS did, so that's why we, that's why we spent our money to hire them to do reclassification. Cause we would have, we were off by one position or one base scale. So it's good we hired WIS to do that. Any other questions on that?
My motion, we approve the reclassification as recommended, approved by the Personnel Committee.
Motion by John, a second by Thor. That we approve changing of this position. And further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say. The next one is on the clerk job description update. There is no reason to refactor, they stay the same, it's just going to be different wording. Cindy, you got any other input on that, please?
For the election part, we have two deputies in our court processing. And one of them is to Jessica in the election office. But that position, she also does a lot of financial. And we realize when she is down in the election, it's a very, it's a hardship in court processing. So basically we're taking another person in court processing that her duties might not be, I mean, it's an important job. But it, it's easier for her to get away and move down and help Jessica. So we're just kind of, just switching a few, a few duties.
So it's just a change of duties, not a change of anything else?
Yeah, no dollars.
No, no dollars.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Got a motion by Thor, a second by Nick, that we approved. Clerk's request. Further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say. And the last one we have comes from the clerk's office or Auditor's Office, I'm sorry. Reclassification of exception. Already did that one, okay. So we, are we caught up then?
Yeah, there was two job descriptions.
Okay, well, that must have been a little. Okay, all right. I think that's everything for the Personnel Committee unless Dutford has anything else. We will have, after the executive meeting, if the Joan and Jim can stay around, we'll have a Personnel Committee, correct?
I think we're going to try and do that.
Okay, that's fine. All right, that's all I have.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I don't know whether Tom wants to reply to that bottom paragraph down there on the bottom about Personnel Committee. Thinking about maybe doing more of the in-house factoring themselves.
We might, but what happened on the one we did, we need to. Yeah, we need, we need more than one session of.
Well, I hope so.
I tried it, because we were here about an hour and a half and.
It's hard.
It's still a lot of time to get to where we're at.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, they still need to keep.
Well, we, that's the reason we got to where we're at, because we used to try to do that ourselves and not just as representatives of the council. But we incorporate a lot of department heads into that. And I agree with Kim on the, on that because one of the biggest obstacles that we overcame and were more comfortable with, once we switched to WIS for those, even though there's an expense there, is the fact of WIS has no problem whatsoever in taking the personal aspect out of it. To whereas sometimes as a committee with department heads and even as a county councilman, sometimes that gets intermingled, not necessarily intentionally, but just because of human nature. And WIS, they don't care. They don't care if it's Bob or Sue or Jim. So I think it's, that's one of the biggest reasons. Kim, if that's what you were alluding to, but that's, so I've kind of spoken to that.
Thank you.
If, if Personnel Committee has time, it's a good exercise to do. It also, I believe, will help understand the WIS process a little more. If you do that, because it is rather lengthy, which one I had never done. And I don't think the rest of the committee had done one quite some time. But it does make you think about the categories that they're looking at. And then it's kind of, kind of interesting to see how we scored it and how they scored. So I, I think it, I think, I agree with what Thor, you and Kim have said. But I also think the process does help the committee understand it better. And sometimes the supervisors, the elected officials start in on it and they kind of do it and it's interesting. So, you know, I, I hope we continue to try to do them and then pair them to the WIS. I do think it makes you understand it.
Do we need to make any changes in the salary order since it's what we've approved today?
I will come back with that.
Anything else Personnel? And then we should stick around just to set a time for.
I want to thank the Personnel Committee for this report on it. It makes things a lot easier.
You're welcome. Yeah, I like those. You want those every month when we have something then?
I think so. I think, I really liked it, Tom. I mean, it was good to be able to look at that and read it and if not just be a spur of the moment decision made by everyone.
Tom can't take a lot of credit for that because I didn't make it up. Anyway, the committee did. That's all we have, Chairman. Okay, good. Sheriff report, Chad?
Morning.
Morning.
Hope everyone, I hope everybody had significant storms in this last night. I was carrying me in a Cleveland township. I guess maybe storms were bad down there. I know Brooklyn kind of a lot of trees down there, so. I know that happens, so. I guess there are a few things that I have for you this morning is. So we've talked a lot about ARPA, back in, even in the last council meeting. But we earmarked 3 million of ARPA toward the jail project. Have not yet used any of that for the jail. But we do have an expense that we've been aware of and we're trying to figure out where we're from. And we think this expense would be appropriate for ARPA. We would just need to come with a resolution. What this is, is our existing jail has an antenna on it and our new jail will need an antenna on it. And I'll remind you, an antenna and a tower are completely different things, but we will need an antenna. And so we approved and agreed that with ERS to, to install that. But we'll need to come to council to get that allocation. The amount is for, I have it here, about $82,913.43. And that would be, that's again, that we've known was coming. But it just seems more appropriate to take it out of ARPA than to take it out of soft costs or, uh, CED or any others. Because we have not yet used the money that we dedicated toward the jail project.
Chad, what's the difference between antenna and a tower?
That's a great question and I'm not an expert on that. I don't think the sheriff is an expert on that either, but I don't know how to answer that.
About $750,000.
Yeah, $750,000 is the difference.
This is just our local system. It's for, it's mostly for fire repeaters. It's for consulates in the back that do that, the recording system that we're going to record, I think, two fire channels now, recordings. Digital channel for the jail. So it's basically what we're already, we're already using, we just have to have another new building.
So it's just going to be mounted on the building?
Yeah, it's mounted. It's, it's plum for it already. It was planned for.
This isn't anything new, like this is something.
Well, it's new to me. I didn't, I didn't know about it, so.
We've known about it. It's something we could take out of soft cost or somewhere else, but we've not yet used the ARPA money. So we'd like to use the ARPA money for that. So we'd need to just come with an ARPA resolution to have that allocated. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And I'm sure that if you go to the existing jail, they can explain that antenna that's on the roof there and why it's going to be needed at the new jail. But it's not, I don't, we went through this whole conversation about towers and all that other business. This is, I just want to be clear that this is not a tower. And I know that it can easily be confused, but this is an antenna that, I mean, ERS told us two years ago in Mark's office. Martin, then Sheriff Gatton at the time's office, that we were going to need to also move the antenna, so. Not, not any surprise to me, but we just have to figure a way to allocate funds. And I, I feel and the other commissioners feel that it's most appropriate to use ARPA for that. So again.
Large expense.
We've, it's $82,000, we earmarked 3 million towards the jail, so that's what we're.
So if you take the $83 million from the 3 million allotted for the jail, will that have to be made up then or you, you're not anticipating that?
No, this is something that's included and you know that it is so expensive. Why can't, together like owner expenses and why can't expenses is included? But we just want to take it from ARPA, so take it.
I understand that, but what I'm, 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 I just want to try and understand what you're proposing. You want to take the $82,913 from the already allotted 3 million for the jail.
Right.
Now, what my question is, after you spend that $82,000 at the end of the jail bill, is that going to have to be put back for another, for another purchase? Okay.
No, this is just, we just want to use ARPA for the expenses instead of thinking of somewhere else.
Right, I understand that.
So where are we setting what soft costs in?
I can get that to you, but we really haven't used any contingencies, at least for the past. It's been three or four months since they've used any. So we didn't get those numbers for you, but I mean, we're right on track.
Chad, when would we know how much of that $3 million that we've earmarked from ARPA? When will we know how much of that is going to be used for cost at the jail? And when we might have to put a pretty quick plan together before December to send that money in a different plan? I mean, are we going to, what's the window look like and what's your anticipation of that?
Yeah, so I think we'll know that conclusion of the jail. Cause our, our bond, what we borrowed was 25, about 25 million. And, right, and the total project with, including soft costs is somewhere near 38 million. So there's a difference that we have to pay for. We've been paying for over time. But then when we start making our, our bond payments, I think there's that difference still that we have to pay to get the building, right? So I think we're going to know in the next three or four months, as we get to the end of the jail bill project, how much of that will spend. But we're, we're ready to start spending from that account. So we'll be coming more frequently for more ARPA resolutions so that we can spend from ARPA now instead of spending from the CED that was dedicated to the jail or from the lit tax that's been allocated already toward the jail. We're just shifting from spending from these parts.
So as we get closer to completion of this project and closer to the end of the year, when we have to have all the ARPA money ear-tagged, how much ARPA money is still available to be ear-tagged for projects?
That's kind of what we were working through at our last council meeting. We were talking about some other things that we might like to see ARPA used for. I don't have a good answer for you today. Because I think we just need to drill down and really figure out how those ones are going to be used. I, I don't know today. I don't know how much will be left from that 3 million, if any, that we've dedicated toward the jail project.
I'm not talking about just that 3 million, I'm talking about total.
We're talking about overall, I get it, yeah.
Because it doesn't make sense, and I guess I offer this as probably something you haven't thought of. But can we dedicate more towards the final bill of the jail as we approach the end of the year? If we don't come up with alternatives to use that other, to dedicate that other ARPA money to, so we can keep that debt down as far as to the taxpayer as we move forward with repayments?
Yeah, quite possibly, because they did change the rule. But last, last month I had that paper with, what we've already spent, what we've earmarked. I have that from me today and the last month, so I don't know. I'd have to go back and look.
Yeah.
But I do have the final rule for ARPA in my desk drawer with all the, all the appropriate expenditures, things that we didn't use it for. Obviously, they said from the very beginning, you can't use the building, it had to be like normal expenses that the county would incur. And that's when we rolled a lot of that into what was called lost revenue, which kind of freed up what we could use it for. So great question, I just don't have that in front of me right now.
Well, essentially freed up county general to pay for projects that.
Absolutely.
Use that money for.
Yes, absolutely.
So have you used it? Didn't we have a million dollars worth of student?
We, we dedicated that, if you recall, we promised that we'd set aside 600,000 year-over-year from CED as a bond backup. But we also said that we would use a million of what we had in cash reserves toward the jail project. And I don't have what's been spent year-to-date for, for that. But I know that we have had expenses from CED. But we're just trying to make sure that we're using all sources of funding. So that we're not, and, and using sources of funding that are appropriate for these expenses. You know, with the rules on ARPA, this, this is definitely an ARPA safe. This is definitely an ARPA safe purchase that it makes sense to use ARPA for because we're following the rules, ARPA. I can save what we have in CED and see if that's better.
Any more questions for Chad on jail or cost or? On schedule?
It's on schedule, yeah. Completion date anticipated till October, end of October. October?
Yeah.
The end of October. Aside from that, on Monday, we received an update from Propel, that's the study group that's studying US 30 from, we're playing the, beyond Warsaw, the total project goes to Valprezzo, but they provided insurance with an update just where they are with their current study and how they're communicating with the public and asking for the public input. They've had multiple meetings of the library and middle school where they have people come in and provide them, but they're getting near completion on their study and their study will be available on their webpage and that's something that they're, that they're providing for and not. So we should have a better idea soon what the plans are with US 30. On Monday, we approved the notice of bidders for our community crossings matching grant award, just as a reminder, we were awarded 1.3 million for community crossings. If you recall, it was historically kept at a million, but they raised that and so we were really, really happy to receive the 1.3 million. The project will be Lincoln Way West from, from US 30 to the Koski, Asko County line. So this will go a long way towards that project. And then also at the Highway apartment, recently Ryan provided samples from our fuel tanks and there's a lot of sediment in there. Everybody talks about knowing someone who's gotten bad gas, that's what potentially could happen with all that sediment, we don't want that here in the fuel systems, the end user like the school buses and handguns and police vehicles. So we've decided to move forward with having those tanks cleaned. We can't find any record of that ever happening. So we feel that it will extend the life of the tanks and protect all the end users. So I have that number, one second.
Get any help from the supplier?
So Ryan has been working actually with the other end users to potentially help for the cost. The supplier, I think, was who recommended having our tanks inspected and ultimately cleaned. So we elected for a man entry cleaning of our tanks. Just, there's only one of the three quotes that we received that was going to do that man entry in the tanks and remove all that sediment. And that cost is $13,025, which we felt was really reasonable, especially for a man entry. And then they'll provide the 55 gallon drums that will be removed, the sediment that they put into those drums, they'll take those off. It's, the first one's free and then it's $4.50 for each drum thereafter. So we just feel this is a good move to make sure that we're extending the life of our tanks, protecting all the end users. And along with that, we can't find where there's any kind of contractual agreement with the end users. And so we have Andy Bosberger looking into that so that we can create a contract that protects not only the end user, but protects the county and covers kind of the shared expense of payments and that sort of thing.
If they, if they open that up for man, they're going to certify the tank again once they seal it back up?
Yeah, I mean, they, they handle all of that. Ryan's here, he has really specific questions, but yes, and, and is it, is our, is our supplier Optum Fuel Management, we the cleaning company, but I'm not sure that they are able, I'll check with them and see if they're able to certify the tank once it's cleaned again, but.
Yeah, you'll want to do that, make sure that's certified. Once they open it, they got it certified and seal it back up, what it should be.
We'll double check on that, thank you. And then lastly, I appreciate Cindy Baker's update. This is a reminder that county does contribute 40,000 from CED that we have for this decade and I'm sure probably more that the county has supported. So I just wanted, Cindy had made a reference, thanking her for contributions, our support and just for some of the newer members, for just a reminder, that's been a CED plan committed expense for prior to me having any involvement nearly eight years ago. So then we're proud of what they do and, you know, unfortunately, they don't get some of the same funding that public schools get, but they're doing great things and we're proud of that. And that's all that.
Panel for Chad? Thank you. Minutes of our April 2nd meeting.
Motion approved is presented.
Motion by Thor, second by Kim, that we approve. April 2nd minutes for the discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand, all those opposed, say. Passes. Comments from the public? During then, we do have a executive session just a few minutes after this, so.
I have nothing.
Joan?
I do. Last Saturday, I went to the historical tour they had here in town on some buildings and I went through the courthouse and Adam Johnson led that tour. He is our head security and he has a lot of knowledge on our courthouse. He was, he did a great job and I was very impressed. I just wanted to give him a shout out.
Thor? I would just like to publicly, not only the people in the room, but especially the public and the voters of Whitney County, to thank you all for your support for yesterday's primary election, ask for continued support for the good things that we're working on and to support me in the general election. And just say that I really believe that Whitney County is a great place to live and I pledge myself to continue for another four years to make sure that we keep it that way. And appreciate everybody that's here today that doesn't necessarily have the forum to be here, but is interested in what's going on and to have that knowledge. So thank you and keep up the good work.
Nick?
I have nothing.
Kim?
I have nothing.
Tom?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing. Meeting's adjourned.